Meeting come to order. Thanks everyone for coming. Crystal, do we have a form, please?
Mayor Mouse, we have Councilmember Contreras present, Councilwoman Gilliam present. Councilwoman Rennenbaum is absent, Mayor Burcham Young is present, and Councilwoman Crummel is present.
Thank you. This time, would you please rise? Pastor Jonathan Mancher of Cross Timbers Baptist Church is going to lead us in invocation and the pledge. Pastor.
Pastor. Psalm sixty-seven, four and five. The Lord says, "Let the nations be glad and sing for joy, for you judge the peoples with equity and guide the nations upon the earth." Let the peoples praise you, oh God, let all the peoples praise you. God, you are the cause for people to be joyful. So may our city and the believers in Jesus within our city be known as joyful because your presence is felt here moment. You judge with equity, God. There is no one outside the scope of your deliverance and saving. Like the Old Testament judges, you are the deliverer to those in need. In a similar way, Father, may our city leaders and employees seek justice, to do what is right at all times, to all people, fairly and with equity. For those in need of help, may your civil servants deliver in time of need. For those in need of justice, may your civil servants enact justice with a righteous and compassionate heart as well, never enjoying the punishment to evil, yet willing to stand up and do what is right. God, you guide the nations upon the earth. You are sovereign over all nations, all states, all counties, and all cities. You are a shepherd who guides all the people who leave these places as well. We confess our finite and fallible minds, yet you are all wise and all knowing. Therefore, we pray for our city leaders to follow your guidance, and that you grant them wisdom to carry out their jobs in such a way that brings glory to you, and benefits, and serves the people in Willow Park. God, let the peoples praise you. May Willow Park be a place that values the praise of you. By your grace, may we live in the freedom afforded to this fire country so that we might freely worship and freely proclaim the saving grace of Jesus and his gospel. And may all people feel welcome in Willow Park, as all who come to you through Jesus are welcomed by you. We ask all of this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Please form in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Item number one is to approve the city council minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor. Thank you. This time, we conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budget. The hearing will open at six oh four PM. Public hearing will. Are there any speakers, please? If not, the public hearing is closed at six oh five PM. Item number three, to adopt an ordinance providing for the adoption of the city of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Grimes.
Yes, Council, this is the first of two actions we'll take regarding the budget. The subsequent action will be the tax rate. We've been working on this budget since June. There's been multiple copies made available to this body and the council at large. We've held a number of workshops. We've received very little feedback from the community. We've received some good feedback from council. And so this is a budget that staff feels comfortable with, confident in, and we think it'll serve our needs for the next fiscal year. I'll highlight a couple of things in it. We have created a parks department. We have began, I don't want to say totally funded our street repairs, but we have took a huge step forward in funding, in actual funding into that. We have put some money back for debt service in the attempt to pay off debt early. And then we also have some money, put it back in for reserves. And so it's a very comprehensive budget. Like I said, it serves our needs. It hits some of the things that council wanted addressed that you guys have asked for publicly and in my office as well. So we feel good about it.
In your packet is ordinance number eight seventy-nine dash two-three of the city of Willow Park approving and adopting a budget for the city of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Crystal, could you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing for the adoption of a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, provided that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances providing a superability clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number eight seven nine dash two-three, approving and adopting a budget for the city of Willow Park for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number eight seven nine dash two-three, as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? If not, Councilman Crummel, how do you vote?
I vote for budget ordinance number eight seven nine dash two-three.
Council Lady Young, how do you vote?
I vote for budget ordinance number eight seven nine dash two-three.
Council Sean Gillan, how do you vote?
I vote the same. Do I have to word that out?
Please.
Sorry, what did, yeah, I know. It's, it's, I'm sorry.
No, your phone.
Oh, on, I vote yes on ordinance eight seven nine dash two-three.
Council Contreras, how do you vote, please?
I vote for budget ordinance number eight seven nine dash two-three.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, the city council may conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park proposed ad valorem tax rate for tax year twenty twenty-three. That's six oh eight PM. Are there any speakers, please?
Mayor Mouse, we have KJ Hannah who'd like to speak during public comments for the tax rate.
Okay.
KJ Hannah, Meadow Place Estates, Willow Park, mayor, council, and Willow Park native. Before the city starts celebrating a fourteen cent reduction in Willow Park property tax rate, wouldn't a like services comparison of the tax rates be more accurate? While the city of Willow Park is providing a fourteen cent tax rate decrease, the citizens of Willow Park will have a new additional tax of ten cents levied by E S D one, who is now providing fire and rescue services to Willow Park citizens since the transfer of the Willow Park Fire Department to E S D one. Is that not correct? So for the new budget year, Willow Park citizens will have a forty cent tax rate imposed by the city, plus a ten cent tax rate imposed by E S D one, for a total fifty cent property tax rate for Willow Park citizens, which is only a four cent reduction from the current tax rate of fifty-four cents. Isn't that correct? And senior citizens of Willow Park won't get any savings since E S D one does not offer senior exemptions that the city does. So senior citizens will be paying more for fire and rescue services this year than last year. And to step into the weeds for a moment, wouldn't the city need to take the ten cent E S D one new tax off the no, off the city's no new tax rate of forty-five cents for a city tax rate of thirty-five cents in order for the citizens to see real tax savings? Isn't all of the savings transferred, from the transfer of our fire department, paying for increased city spending and not citizen tax reductions? Isn't the celebration of a fourteen cent tax decrease like cutting off your arm and then bragging about your weight loss? In the community news, the city was quoted, "I don't know if this is the largest tax reduction in Texas, but it's big." Isn't that, isn't that brag mostly party hat and no cattle? Thank you for clarifying or correcting my calculations, and as always, I thank you for your public service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Did you, we've got one other speaker.
A form for an open hearing.
Public hearing. Go ahead.
Joining when we speak. My name's Charlie Hodges. I'm president of the HOA, State Coach of States. I understand that we're having a fourteen cent decrease in the tax rate. How does that land on the effective tax rate and the rollback rate? Where are we there? Are we, are we still taking in the same amount of money as we did last year?
Yes.
So.
It's no new revenue rate. We're actually below the no new revenue rate.
How far below that?
I want to say four cents.
So four cents below the no new?
Yeah, I don't know. It's in the budget. It's not off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
We're below the no new revenue rate. And that's been discussed probably the last six weeks.
Well, this is my first meeting here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing closes at six twelve PM. We have a motion for the tax adoption rate. I'm sorry, item number five is to adopt an ordinance adopting an ad valorem tax rate and levy on assessed property not to exceed zero point three nine seven five nine seven per hundred dollars valuation for tax year twenty twenty-three for the city of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy of debt obligations, zero point two oh eight eight seven two, and a levy for maintenance and operations, zero point one eight eight seven two five, consistent with the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four municipal budget. We have a motion in the packet. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt an ordinance adopting an ad valorem tax rate and levy on assessed property in the amount of zero point three nine seven five nine seven per one hundred dollar valuation for tax year twenty twenty-three for the city of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy for debt obligations, zero point two zero eight eight seven two, and a levy for maintenance and operations, zero point one eight eight seven two five, consistent with the fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four municipal budget.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, please? Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion, please? All in favor. Thank you. Mr. Gillan, you may leave if you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Hope you feel better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for not being sick.
Item number six, discuss and take action to authorize request for bank depository services proposal.
Yes, our contract with First Financial Bank is expiring in October, maybe November. But we need to go out and do the R F P for our bank depository. This is where we hold most of our operating accounts and anything that's not in a reserve or a tax, our tax pool fund. The R F P has been attached. We would like y'all's permission to send the R F P out to financial institutions and with the hope of taking action at the September twenty-sixth meeting.
Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the request for bank depository services proposals, R F Ps to financial institutions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor. Thank you. Item number seven, to approve the city's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three third quarter financial report.
Jake.
Jake.
Okay, so this is going, I know we're into August now. These reports are through the end of June, so your third fiscal quarter. And again, I'm going to kind of focus on that summary page that you guys have and just highlight a few things, a few clarifications on there, and just point out maybe a few things to, to be aware of. Starting with the general fund, if you look on there in terms of the dollar amount, percent of revenue, percent of expense, it's going to look unusual. It has the purchase of this building and the bond proceeds from this building in that, right? That's just, in terms of governmental accounting, that's how that's reported. And so that's why those numbers were so inflated. If you were to take out, so just to kind of give you some context, if we take out the transactions regarding buying this building and the debt proceeds from this, and take out the E S D transactions that we've talked about in a prior quarter, your revenue is about four point five million year-to-date, which is eighty-four percent of budget. So you see you're trending right where you kind of need to be on the revenue side. On the expense side, you're four point three five million, which is eighty-two, eighty-two percent of budget. And so from a high level and general fund, you know, it shows a surplus of five sixty-eight. Part of that includes the excess cash that you got on this building transaction that's going to be used for parking lot improvements or whatever else. And so if you, again, you take that out, you're at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surplus through the end of June. With everything coming in, we've already paid expenses for the fire department throughout the end of the year, with sales tax coming in through the end of the year, you should end up being maybe a small surplus general fund. It's sitting pretty strong. I mean, you see, sales tax, I think, will hit probably two point two million this year, you know, when all said and done with some of what we have coming in. It's at four hundred thousand through the end of June. So from the financials that you're looking at, it's four hundred thousand over last year. Your property tax is right on budget in terms of what we had planned for. We're basically, we're at ninety-nine point five percent right now. We're right there on that. One thing that's slowing you down a little bit, so your permits are less than what they've been and less than budget, your developmental revenue. So you're down two seventy from last year on the permits. You're going to see that in your water and your wastewater fund as well, on your impact fees. Those are down. So again, that's something that obviously you budget based on what you brought in historically, but those are a little harder to predict, right? It's not like a sales tax or property tax where you know what you have coming in on that. So that's offsetting a little bit of the growth that you had there. But again, overall general fund, you're in, you're in good shape. You're at a surplus. And like I said, you'll probably end the year at a small surplus, you know, kind of based on what we're looking at. Water fund, so you see where it's showing a deficit year-to-date, that does include the amount that was transferred out to wastewater. So if you're looking at each individual, individual fund by itself, that's part of that. You also have to think, this doesn't include your big billing months, July, August, September, you know, so that's going to boost that fund. Again, just some things on there. Your user charges, you're up about two hundred thousand from last year, probably end the year at about two eight to two nine million, two point eight to two point nine million. So I think you're going to end up being about three hundred thousand over budget. So that, again, that's helping you out on that water fund. Impact fees are down eighty-three thousand from last year and two hundred fifteen thousand under budget. So that's kind of what we talked about. That's, that's hurting a little bit. And then some of the expenses, there's some things on there that weren't budgeted, and just some of the costs are a little bit higher on that fund. There's, you know, some of the water meter costs are eighty thousand dollars, some generators, legal fees. So there's been some operating costs that have been a little bit higher. But again, within the water fund, I think, from a high level, even with some of those costs, with the transfer, you'll probably be close to break even in that fund by the end of the year. It's in a strong cash position. We've had some good years in the past. You've built up some good reserves in there, so that's helped. So I don't have any concern on that. It's just, again, maybe not as strong as some of the prior years due to some of the cost and transfers, things like that. And then wastewater, so we talked more extensively last quarter about that and some of the cash that's being spent out of that. So that, that's obviously something we're, you know, that y'all are aware of and looking at in terms of the project there. But just again, some of the things to point out, your user fees are actually up from last year. You're up a hundred seventeen thousand. So I think you're going to hit about seven hundred eighty-five thousand in user charges. Again, you're starting to see month over month, those things start to creep up, which is what we were wanting when that debt was issued a couple of years ago. The big change year over year is you have the additional debt service costs of the new debt that's come on this year. So that's up four hundred thousand from last year. And again, that's not going away. And then some, again, your operating costs, your repair and maintenance utilities are up a little bit as well. So, you know, you can see year-to-date, you're down one fifty. If you didn't have that transfer, you'd be down obviously, you know, much more than that. And so that's one that I know, you know, y'all are going to have the rate study discussion tonight on that. Without some changes like a rate increase and addressing how we're going to manage the debt, things like that, it's going to continue to require transfers from water fund or other funds to keep that fund afloat. You know, if you just look from a high level, if our user fees are seven hundred eighty-five thousand for the year, our debt service is eight sixty. So our user charges don't even cover the debt. That doesn't account for your operating costs. So that's the big one. And, and the reality is that you hope that you only, you know, we have the old package plant debt, which is about two hundred sixty thousand annually, and then you have the new debt. I think the hope would be when the new plant is on, you address the old debt, and that takes away that extra two hundred sixty thousand debt service each year. So there's some ways to solve the problem of just going about doing that. And again, just trying to highlight where we're at on that fund. So those are your three major funds in terms of where we're at for the year. The only other thing I'd point out, and I think we've talked about this at a few meetings, is your tourism. That's continuing to build up. So as of most recent month, you're about four hundred fifty thousand in cash in that account, in that bank account. So that's something that, now that you have that new hotel, we haven't spent anything out of there because it's for designated uses, but you do have some cash available for those restricted purposes when that time comes to use that. Is there any questions, anything in the report? I tried to just hit the major funds on there, but happy to answer any questions overall.
Good job, Jake. Thank you.
Thanks.
One of the things I do want to bring up, so the wastewater fund's going to get a lot of attention in the next-gen presentation, and Jake alluded to that. Most of your wastewater budget is debt. There's very little, I think we have two employees that are paid out of wastewater. There's very little operational cost. Most of that budget is debt. And so the idea was, three years ago, was that we would have the plant, bring it on board, bring it online, and sell the package plant. Obviously, the timing, COVID delays with Austin and T C Q and War Development Board, that is not gone as planned. And so you're carrying the note for two debts, one for the package plant and the other one for the one you're about to build. There's going to be some short-term stresses, but hopefully later on in the agenda, we've got some, some things on the wastewater treatment plant that we'll try to cut and mitigate some of those costs as well.
Any other questions for Jake? Do we have a motion to approve the third quarter report, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the city's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three third quarter financial report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
Next item, to accept the water and wastewater study from New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Mr. Fundaberg.
Council, several months ago, we entered into an agreement with New Gen Strategies and Solutions to look at our water and sewer rates. The water and sewer rates have not increased since two thousand and seventeen, so we're looking at six years. That's an increase. And so you just heard Jake, and you heard the reason that we're looking to do this study. And so Chris Eckert is here tonight to give you a presentation. So Chris.
Come on in. Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor, council. Chris Eckert with New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Pleasure to be with you tonight. Do have a presentation I'd like to walk you through this evening. I'll try and keep this brief. I know you've got a long agenda, but also happy to answer any questions that you may have as I go through this. I would like to start on page two of the presentation, this next slide here, and want to remind you that as we talk about the water and wastewater utility, we are talking about a business-type activity of government. When you look at your budget, when you look at your audit, your water and wastewater utility is tracked in what's called a proprietary or enterprise fund. Those funds are reserved for business-type activities of government. So ultimately, our water and sewer utility is a business, and we need to treat it like a business. So we come back to what I call business fundamentals. There are certain things we need to do. First and foremost, we have to have a sufficient revenue stream. Our revenues have to match or exceed our expenses. If we don't, no pun intended, we're underwater. So we have to have a sufficient revenue stream. Second thing we have to do is we need to watch our reserves. We literally have to plan for a rainy day. At some point, it will start raining again, and when that happens, people use less water. Our revenue stream falls. We need sufficient reserves. Need to make sure we keep some money in the bank account to cover our expenses during those leaner to cover our expenses during those leaner times. Third, and probably most importantly, when you're looking at water and wastewater utilities, is we must reinvest in our business. We have pipes, plants, pumps. We've already been talking about the wastewater treatment plant tonight. We have to reinvest in these items, and these are not things you can run down to Lowe's or Home Depot and get. These are expensive items, and we need to plan for those. They're, they're long-lived assets, but we have to maintain them, we have to plan for that replacement. So please keep those fundamentals in mind tonight as we talk through the study. On the next slide, slide three, every council I'm in front of wants to know, how do we look compared to our neighbors? And so I put these charts together. But every council I'm in front of, I tell them the same thing. This is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Every community is different. And so while we sit here and look at this chart tonight, other councils are sitting here, looking at charts like this tonight, making decisions on their rates going forward. Every community is also different. They have different plants, they have different water sources. So take this with a grain of salt, this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. But as we look at this chart, what this is, is a 5,000 gallon customer. So this is an average customer. We use 5,000 gallons as an average single-family home. This is somebody that's probably watering a little bit. They've got a nice yard, they've got, they've got all of their domestic use in terms of taking care of the family. But this is what the bill looks like right now within the city for 5,000 gallons of water, 5,000 gallons of wastewater service. It's $106.91, and you can see where you compare to these other communities. On the next chart, we provided the same comparison, but here we're looking at commercial rates. And for this amount, what we've done is we're using 15,000 gallons of water and wastewater service for a commercial business. So more water and wastewater use here, but again, you see where you fall for 15,000 gallons of use, 197.31, and you see how that comparison flushes out. We will be coming back to this later in the presentation this evening. So with that, moving on to slide five, I talked earlier about reinvestment. Right now, this is what we've used for your capital plan, $35.4 million. Those are big dollars. These are big items that we're looking at. We have to make sure that we're planning for this, whether we're going to potentially use new debt, whether we're using cash, how we're going to fund these items. All of these have been built into the rate study that I'm presenting to you this evening. So our plan is that we're going to execute on all of these as intended. As we move on to slide six, what I have here for you is three charts, again, looking at our revenue sufficiency, looking at our reserves, looking at our debt service coverage. Can we pay our debt? The good news is our water fund is in really good shape right now. But ultimately, what does that mean? It means our water fund is helping support our wastewater fund. You've already heard tonight, we have concerns about the wastewater fund, we need to fix our wastewater rates, we need to get that fund in a good standalone position. So again, you see our, our water charts here. Let me take you to slide seven. This is, this is the wastewater side that I really want you to pay attention to. And again, that bottom chart here, revenues versus expenses, that revenue sufficiency chart, anytime those vertical bars are above the line, that line is our revenue. Anytime that bar is above the line, that means we are insufficient. And this is with the transfer from the water fund. So right there, even with that support, our wastewater revenue stream, our wastewater fund is not in a good position. And that's really what my recommendation for you is tonight, we need some sizable wastewater increases going forward. I'm going to skip over slides eight and nine. This just is our proof out that our plan works, so I want to talk to you about, about what our plan is. And one of the things I want to talk to you is, is really about a structural change that we're recommending to your rates, and that's related to your multifamily customers. So when you look at how we are regulated, we are regulated by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. They tell us we have to have certain capacity in our system. And that capacity is all based on the number of connections in our system. So what I provided for you here on the screen is the definition of a connection. This comes straight from the T C Q rules, Texas Administrative Code 29038. When you look at that, the T C Q defines a connection as a single-family residential unit for each commercial or industrial establishment. But then I want to keep going to that next phrase where it talks about, as an example, the number of service connections in an apartment complex would be equal to the number of individual apartment units. So as we design our system, as the T C Q looks at us and tells us, you have to have certain capacity, they're not looking at apartment buildings, they're looking at individual units. And so as we think about that, and as we design rates and set pricing, it's our opinion you should be pricing each individual unit. There should be a price charged within your rates, excuse me, a rate charge to each of those units. And so let me show you what that looks like. On slide 11, I've provided an example for you here. This is a customer assuming 259 multifamily units, and this customer has a six-inch meter, we're assuming 630,000 gallons of usage. On the left-hand side, you see the current bill, fixed charge right now, 2,086, the volume's 3,0745, for a total water bill of 5,0831. Our recommendation is that instead of charging this based on the six-inch meter, you would go and you would charge based on the units, in this case, 259 units, and you would charge each of those units the same base bill that you would charge all other connections in the city, that lowest meter charge. So instead of the 2,085.72, you'd charge 41.71, which is the base, the base bill, times the number of units. So that would mean that minimum bill, instead of being 2,086, would be 10,803. This also changes how we run volumes through our tier, so there's actually a slight reduction in the overall consumption element of the bill. But you can see what this does to the water bill is, instead of 5,0831, the water bill would be 13,254. Where it is more striking is really on the next slide, where we look at wastewater. Right now, when we look at this customer, they're billed as one customer for wastewater, $20. But we have 259 units, and so it's our opinion you should be charging those 259 units instead of $20, the bill, the fixed charge on the wastewater side should be 5,180. So again, that is one structural element that we have built into our recommendation, into our rate plan. We certainly don't have to do this, but we feel that there's cost causation in how you incur cost on your system, how you invest in capital. We feel this better aligns with how you incur that cost. So with that, moving on to slide 13, you can see what the actual rates are that we're proposing. On the water side, you're going to note, there are no changes going into fiscal year '24. And then changes from '25 to '28, the only changes that you're going to see there are going to be on that volumetric side. What we're doing here is effectively passing along increases that we anticipate experiencing from our wholesale water provider, right? So we've built those in, projected those out, those are fairly small. The bigger increases are coming on the sewer side. And you can see down below, we have increases in both the minimum charge as well as the volumetric charge. This is effectively a three-year phase-in to get our wastewater utility where it needs to be. So we're doing that over three years. We're not building up reserves. All we're trying to get to do, get to is a revenue-sufficient position. We'll have to address reserves at a later time. Really, right now, from a triage standpoint, we're just trying to stop the bleeding, is really what we're doing on the wastewater side. But that's the recommended rate plan for the residential side, the commercial rates. You're going to see that on slide 14. Here, you'll see that the commercial wastewater charge is slightly higher than the residential charge. That's for two reasons. One, some of our commercial customers produce a higher level of wastewater in terms of the strength of the wastewater. So again, that's reflected in the rate. But also, part of this is going in and looking at our competitive position in the region. And right now, you saw earlier, from a commercial standpoint, we are lower. And so this is really in an attempt to bring you up, try and provide some relief for your residential customers while we go through this process, but to, to get everybody basically on a level playing field. So with that, what does this look like to a customer? On slide 15, I'm going to go back to my 5,000 gallon customer here. Right now, 108.21, that is the bill there for water and wastewater, 5,000 gallons. And you see what the increase there is over three years. Each year, '24, '25, '26, the increase to the wastewater bill is $11. That is a monthly increase in the wastewater bill to get us where we need to be on the wastewater side. The water charge, you see slight increases going out into the future, just passing along those increases from your wholesale water provider. But this is primarily a wastewater increase that we're looking at here. Same chart, but for commercial customer on slide 16, this is the 15,000 gallons of water and wastewater use for a commercial customer. There's quite a bump here in 2024. Again, part of that is, is getting commercial to where it needs to be, it's having that increase on the wastewater side, leveling that out there in '25 and '26. But again, this is for 15,000 gallons of water and wastewater usage. On slide 17, as we go to slide 17, what you see here again is that same regional bill comparison. You'll note there are some slight differences here from the numbers you just saw. Part of that's associated with the groundwater conservation district pass-through. That's why you're seeing some of those, some of those discrepancies in the number there. But again, as, as we come back to this, where we don't have that conservation district number in here. But right now, 106.91 for the current bill, going to 117.91, that would be the increase that we're recommending on the residential side for 5,000 gallons. That's implementing this rate plan. As I said before, there are other cities on this list that are in this process right now, some of these communities I've been in front of, they will be going up. So as you look at your proposed bill, we're comparing you to everybody else's bill today. So if we rerun this in October, rerun it in January, it will look different, could potentially even look the same in terms of overall relative position. But again, that's the residential comparison. Slide 18 here, that is the commercial comparison, going from the 197.31 to the 254.50. So you are moving up slightly here on this list. But again, as I said, other communities are making these same decisions right now. So with that, I know I've thrown a lot of information at you, lots of charts and graphs, but happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
I appreciate your information, and it's probably way overdue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was completely thorough, so I have.
Oh, thank you.
Very good.
I think it's important to note that we have not had a sewer increase. We've absorbed all the costs and everything. 2017, 2018 was the last rate increase. So, I mean, it's, there's a little bit of catch-up here and a little bit of just bad luck on the sewer, in the sewer fund.
I guess my question for our, our action is to accept the report, the study. At what date do we finalize the actual rates?
So y'all would accept the report tonight, and then we will prepare an ordinance according to these rates for your consideration at the September 12 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
At what point do you see, you have some of the projected capital outlays, some of the, the stuff, is that considered catch-up as well, or like?
There, there is a lot of catch-up in here. Ultimately, like I said, I think after this three-year period, you're going to get wastewater to at least a revenue-sufficient position. We're going to have to address reserves after that time. But again, after this three-year phase-in, we're hopeful that wastewater will be in a better, better position. I know you're going to talk about plants tonight, and as you talk about wastewater plants right now, the dollars are somewhat mind-blowing, frankly. A lot of councils I'm in front of, every time they go out to bid, the dollar amounts come in a lot higher than what they're anticipating, and that's just what the market looks like right now. Hopefully, some of these prices will moderate out into the future, but my magic eight ball's a little fuzzy on that right now.
Okay. Are there any of these that you see that will need to be addressed before the three-year time period? That's something that we're going to have to kind of plan.
So that you're, all, all, yeah. Well, all of these capital improvements that are listed here are built into this plan.
Okay.
So if you follow the plan, you should be able to execute on those. Again, the assumption is those dollars. If those dollars change, the rate plan may need to change.
Okay.
I do have a, did you have a growth component factored into your rate?
Uh, yes, sir. I don't have that right handy right now, but I can get you that. Thought it was in my backup here, but I actually don't have that with me. We did build a growth component in here. Yes, sir.
Because we do know that we've got, where's Tony? 200 between Country Hollow and residential, single families.
There's a new.
And then we got maybe another 100.
The canvas.
Yeah. Canvas. So we do have some growth to help get, obviously, the capital improvements, but help with the reserve as well. And I know Rick's going to say this in the paper, but it's just, I think we just ran into some bad luck in the last 36 months with this, with the sewer fund.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, recommended motion?
Can I ask one more real quick? Sorry. Just where do we see the, like, we have this three-year plan, where is the build-out for Willow Park in that timeframe as well?
So what's the?
At some point, we, we build out Willow Park and there are no more, unless we want to start building up, you know, we get to that point, but where is our?
We're going to put, we're putting three stories on your house.
We could use the space. Let's do it.
Our build-out projections, when we game-planned this three years ago, when we did the sewer plant, I remember Betty, you and I saying it probably would be about a 10- to 15-year COVID kind of changed that a little bit. I think it slowed it down, but I do not think it, I think it's still, it's still 10 to 15 years. The one factor that we've seen, and, and not to get too political about this, but the one thing that has completely stopped growth has been the lack of construction that's due to interest rates. It's very difficult. Three years ago, you could buy a house at a reasonable price at a low interest rate. I think everybody in the room probably, you know, probably glad they got a 2% or 3% rate when they did. But you're not seeing a lot of people coming in for, for building permits for a single-family home. That contributes to this as well. And I think when all the factors kind of, when the waters start calming a little bit, you'll start to see these things. For example, Country Hollow's been on the books for two years? About two years, and we finally got them to come in and, and, and start doing some meaningful work about a week ago. But we, but in, I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but when we do these things, we have to plan these things out, because there was a point where we were on this dais, where we didn't have the capacity to do water, and you didn't have the capacity to do wastewater. One other factor in your wastewater fund, everything with wastewater seems to cost twice as much, and you have half as many customers paying the bill. So you have half as many wastewater accounts as you do water accounts. But to Chris's point, your wastewater treatment plant is, call it 15 million, that's just a number I'm putting out there. We did Fort Worth water total all-in for 10. Gives you an idea.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the water and wastewater study from New Gen Strategies and Solutions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good work, Chris.
Item number nine, the city council may consider authorizing staff to amend the bid specifications for the new wastewater plant, to reduce the plant from a 1 million-gallon capacity plant to a 750,000-gallon capacity plant, and authorize city staff to re-advertise to see competitive proposals. Derek.
Thank you. Referring back to the bids we took in May for the wastewater plant, the, the base bid, the, if you recall, we had a, had a low bid that, that had to be thrown out or actually pulled out. So the base bid we had to work with was 20.5 million. And so we started, we had a series of meetings, discussed things we could do to change it and bring that closer to the budget. And so, and that was for a 1 M G D, a 1 million gallon a day plant. And so we looked at your use or your, your demands and what that was going to look like in the near future. And the, the growth expectations, just like you guys were talking about a while ago, have changed in, in the time that this has all taken place. And so your current peak at the plant is about 375,000 gallons a day. And so we were anticipating that to be over 5 at this point. And so based on that, the very first thing we, we looked at, or maybe not the first thing, but one of the, the biggest thing we looked at was reducing the size of that plant from a 1 M G D plant to a 750,000 gallon a day plant. We came to that, you know, 500, if you went all the way down to a half million, which is what you currently have, that, that severely limits your ability to grow at all. 750 gives you quite a bit of expansion room. And so based on the projections that we now have, we think And so based on the projections that we now have, we think that's a reasonable number to hit. And so we have looked at doing that, and, and among other things, like we had the extension of JD tolls in that contract as an access and then, and then a future extension. A pretty significant building and some other things that we also changed in an effort to reduce that. And if you kind of take all of those things together, including the change in capacity, the numbers we're looking at that we think we will see would bring us about 15 and a half million, give or take. Those are my numbers, that, those are my estimates. And so the ask here is that, that you allow us to go out for bid with those changes. We're, we've actually been going through those and making those. We'll have those ready soon, if, if, if it's an affirmative action tonight, and be ready to put that out for bid and take bids quickly on that change. So requesting that we can go out for bid for 750,000 gallons.
When will the bids go out?
If you guys say okay, we're probably looking at three weeks or less. Get it in the paper.
And then 30 days for the bids? So it'll be October?
October reasonably is.
Okay.
Get bids in hand.
Any other questions for Eric? Or do we have a motion?
You mean Derek.
Derek, what did I say?
Eric.
Eric, I missed.
I can't hear you. Close enough.
No, I don't have questions for Derek, but I, based on what Jake presented, that leaves us, we're going to get bids around 15 and a half to 16 million. We're still about four to five million short. So will we be working on what, how to make up that?
Yes.
Difference between what we have left in the budget?
Yes.
So that as we get those bids back, we can have presentations in the process to?
We have a couple of options.
Okay.
I think we'll put the bids out, and let's see what the bids come in at, and then we can, we can talk. There may be some partnerships available and, and things like that.
But as quickly as possible, so that?
Yes. This, this isn't something that, we, we've been, we've been working on this since Memorial Day, when the low bidder, when he pulled out, we kind of, again, this is, I hate using this term, but it's another string of bad luck. It's just another hit to the, to this fund, almost. When he pulled out, it really kind of made us rethink our calculus. I will ask this, because I know Eric's probably going to ask it. We can scale this up. If we go 750, we can scale up relatively easy, correct?
Yeah. It's, it's a modular system, so, you know, most of the infrastructure would be in place you can just build on.
And one of the other things I was going to ask in the bid is, we're doing with concrete, and we're doing it with that coating to make it last 40-plus years, correct? I don't want it to be a short-term asset, so.
That, that was a minor.
Yeah.
Savings anyway. That's not going to be something that's going to get us where we're.
Got it. The real savings were going to be JD tolls in the road.
Right.
I think, I think there was some, some profit in those two components in some of these bids. And, and, and so we're kind of just going, I don't want to say meat and potatoes, but it's just a basic.
That's, that's completely accurate.
And the building's no longer necessary. When we purchased this building, the idea was we were going to use that for Michelle's office. We'd have a, a nice conference room, if you will, and, and something for training and things of that nature. Purchasing this building, again, reset our calculus on what we needed out there. And so it was really a good opportunity for us to take a step back and say, okay, what do we need? And I think that's going to work out well. Good.
Do we have a motion, please?
I have one more question for, so we have received a permit from TCEQ and approval from Water Development Board for the 1 million. Does this slow down the process at all, or we, will we always have that ability, that permit for 1 million? Does that change the permitting process?
As far as they're concerned, you're permitted for 1 MGD.
Okay. So that would allow us, if we scale up in the future, we've already got the permit?
Yes.
Yep. And really, if it's, we're at, what'd you say, 400,000, 390?
Currently?
Yeah.
350.
So you're at 350. It's a 750 plant. At 80%, you have to be under plan, which we would probably already have anyway. At 90%, you have to be under construction. So that's 60675, respectively. So you, you're going to have a few years before you get to that point.
Okay. Just making sure we didn't have to go back through those agencies in the next two months.
No, no. Permits have to be renewed every five years, so, anyway, but it, it'll be, it'll be starting at a 1 MGD.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to authorize staff to amend the bid specifications for the new wastewater treatment plant to reduce the plant from a 1 million-gallon capacity to a 750,000-gallon capacity plant, and authorize the staff to re-advertise and seek competitive proposals.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Tony?
Item number 10, to approve a replat of 4,900 Interstate 20 Service Road South Lot 3R Block 1 Porter Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for a replat that's abandoning the Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way north of the property. The staff has reviewed the replat. All corrections were addressed. There were three minor items that had to be taken care of, that, that you're not seeing on here. That has already been revised. And the Planning and Zoning Commission was presented this replat at their 8:15 meeting with a recommendation in favor of three to one. Staff recommends approval of the replat with addressing of the remaining correction items. I apologize, that's incorrect. It was four, four to zero for this one.
Any questions for Tony, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Lot 3R Block 1 of the Porter Edition with conditions as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Item number 11, to approve a final plat for lots 1 through 4, Block 1 Broadway Business Park Edition being 8.046 acre tract in the McKinney and Williams survey, abstract number 954 in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Tony?
The applicant and the surveyor for this property was for the final plat for the acreage that's along the East Parker, East Bankhead Highway, for one parcel into lots 1 through 4. This is in our ETJ. All lots will have private sewer and water with a 50-foot road easement to allowing access to East Bankhead Highway. Final plat has been reviewed and approved by city staff. Planning and zoning commission was presented the final plat on the 8:15 meeting with a recommendation in favor of four to zero. Staff recommends approval of the final plat as presented.
Okay. Do we have questions, or do we have a, a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for lots 1 through 4, Block 1 Broadway Business Park Edition as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, to adopt an ordinance regarding the City of Willow Park, Texas Municipal Retirement System's benefits, adopting non-retroactive repeating COLAs for retirees and their beneficiaries under TMRS Act ACT 853404, and authorizing annually accruing updated service credits and transfer updated service credits.
This is me.
Mr. Grimes?
Hope I get this right, because I told Candy to tell the TMRS representative we didn't need him, so I got two TMRS experts in the back, back there. So TMRS is our retirement system. It is a very simple system. It's not like other pension programs that you might see in other entities. It's primarily self-funded. I know that a couple of years ago, that was a big thing with auditors. They wanted to come out and look at your, your pension benefits. It's a real simple system where it's 7% match. It's a two-to-one, and it's very robust. But what it does not have is a COLA component to it. And so one of the things that, that we wanted to do for our employees was to provide that COLA to them in future years. We're the only city, I believe, in Parker County that does not have a COLA. So this is pretty much SOP with other communities in our area. There is a financial cost to it. I think at the end of the day, it's about a 1%. We're going to start going from, was it 14% to 15%? To cover the service credits and things of that nature. So it's a, not that much of a, of an increase, but it does provide a good benefit. But primarily, it's a good recruitment tool for staff here. It's also a good recruitment tool for Chief Franklin to maybe get some more veteran officers to come to Willow Park, and they see the COLA. Employee, the employees are looking at those things now. They're looking at, at what benefits we can provide them. And so this would make us competitive with our neighbors and with other cities in the state.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Grimes, or do we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt an ordinance regarding the City of Willow Park's Texas Municipal Retirement System benefits. One, adopting non-retroactive repeating, repeating COLAs for retirees and their beneficiaries under the TMRS Act, Act 853 dot 404F and F dash one. And two, authorizing annually accruing updated service credits and transfer updated service credits.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Department reports. Mr. Grimes?
Yes. I have all the department heads here. They can answer any specific questions, but y'all had, their staff reports have been in the packet. Just a couple of highlights as I go through. This is not going to be in the order that's on your agenda, but communications, we've got a couple of events. September 11th, Memorial, it's going to be at the shops. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting on the water facility over here on the 14th. October the 3rd is National Night Out. December 1st, we're doing a Christmas tree lighting here at 120 El Chico. Is that correct, Rose?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Public Works, water usage is high. It's abnormally, because of the abnormally high temperatures and lack of rainfall. Water project from Fort Worth, everything's operational. We do have some leaks. We're seeing more leaks as the ground is dry and, and the drought conditions are impacting that a little bit. We also had a contractor hit a line. Both leaks have been repaired within a few hours, and, and pressure was restored quickly. Wastewater, the affluent line, the contractor has over half the line from the new wastewater treatment plant to Squaw Creek installed. I think we're going to get the lift station shortly.
Next week.
Okay. I knew shortly, but I didn't know when. And potholes, crews have been out. I know that we probably haven't done enough, if the public thinks that, and I agree, but we've put 20 tons of cold mix down, and so we're trying to hit the potholes as we can. City Engineer reports drainage improvements. Phase one is complete. Phase two is under construction. The one update that I think everybody wants to know about are streets. Kingsgate, the contractor's supposedly going to switch traffic on Friday. Crown, they continue to work along the ditches. This will be completed by the end of the week. Ranch House, the contractor continues to work on the subgrade prep. I think they've already got one of the lanes completed, and they're probably, I think they're working on, however you want to call it, the south or the northbound lane, whatever, whatever that one is. Asphalt paving was supposed to begin today. I think it's going to start next week. Old Ford, that area, they're going to do removal and replacement to the drive-in-all approaches. I think that's going to start next week as well. We're hopeful for that. And then the Fire Marshal, we, I want to brag on Charlie, Chief Snyder, Fire Marshal Snyder, John Snyder. He's, he has like six names.
That's good.
We call him Charlie around the office. We completed the merger with ESD-1. As you know, that was an election that was held in November, and it passed two to one. And so that merger is now complete. And as Jake mentioned, we did pay all of our labor costs upfront. We front-loaded the second quarter, the third and fourth quarter salaries. They are offering independently the Fire Department, and they're doing fire inspections and other reviews for us. They're also doing code enforcement, which I'm very pleased with. I think we have found a niche for Kevin Lockwood. We found something that he likes more than the University of Alabama and CrossFit. So I didn't think that was possible. And they're also using MyGov in coordination with other departments. I want to say something real quick. We've got a good staff. I always brag on them, but we have a tremendous staff. We've had some challenges. I would say we've had significant challenges in the last 12 months. If you want to go back to the sewer plant, we've had challenges for the last three years. Michelle Gelker was hired, I think, the council meeting before we had approved the sewer She hasn't flinched in the middle of any of this stuff. And when I come from that hallway into her office with my hair on fire, she sits me down, slaps me a little bit, and says it's going to be okay. Candy is phenomenal at what she does. When I can, I can call her up on a moment's notice, I can get the data that we need, that me and Jake need, to analyze information and make some decisions and to bring to y'all our recommendations. Gretchen Vasquez has paid for herself this last year. Just the inspections alone on the street projects has saved us, her salary plus, plus, plus. Plus Gretchen is always taking the customers' complaints. And so that is a very thankful job, and everybody's always happy to talk to Gretchen. Tony Fisher worked 11 hours over the weekend on a Saturday. Guys, that's just almost unheard of in government work. You've got a really good staff here, and I think that, I appreciate what y'all have done for them tonight, and it's going to go a long way and help us keep them. So I want to, on that note, I want to end on one thing. If you're as pissed off about the streets as I am, the contractor, you are, you are right there with me. And my meeting with them on Monday morning at 9 o'clock is not going to be pleasant for that contractor. It is almost inexcusable how long they have taken on some of these projects. I am not happy about it, and we're going to close the door at 9 o'clock, and if you want to come pay your water bill, you're probably going to hear the city manager.
Be nice.
I'd just like to echo on your comments on staff. This was something before. You talked about how great the staff was, that I was going to say tonight. Phenomenal staff reports. It's just the quality to be able to have that information there for any of our citizens and to be able to see it online and not have to sit through a Facebook meeting or come to our meeting. It's really nice to see those updates. The quality is just phenomenal. The last two times we've had them, I've been so impressed. I'd say the way the agendas are pulled together and the staff reports within each item, we have just come leaps and bounds, and it makes all of our meetings so much more efficient. It makes it so much easier. I hate if it makes it boring, because we have all the answers there from staff prior, and we're not asking questions. I'm sorry if our meetings are dull, but the job y'all are doing just really makes our job a lot easier. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a dull council meeting.
Yeah, please don't let me have another one like that.
I concur. I've told Mr. Grimes, he's pulled together a great staff. If there's a weak link, I don't know where it is. So you guys do a fantastic job. Couple of things, I'd like to thank Steve Watson and the ESD-1 for putting the fire out over off, off of White Settlement Road. Was that Sunday?
Yes, Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon. I went up there, and they did a 64.7 acres, I think, were burned. And he and his, the crew did a great job. We had a passing of one of our citizens. I wanted to mention Fred McCully, served on the planning and zoning for many years in Willow Park. He passed this last week, and he will be missed. So it's all the comments I have. I appreciate the council for the job that you do and the service you do. Mr. Grimes?
For the first time ever, I don't have any comments.
Hallelujah.
I have one request. Jake mentioned our tourism.
Yes.
If we could, this is not something for the next meeting or anything, but over the next several months, if staff could kind of come up with some recommendations for how we could potentially see using that portion of our budget.
We will consult with the city attorney.
Perfect.
I tried to do a vacation to Cabo, but Pat said that wasn't allowed.
Thank you, Pat.
That was a joke, if any.
Any other questions? Comments?
I want to echo what Mayor Moss said about Chief Watson, ESD 1, putting out that fire, and everybody else that came to support. There was a lot of people out there. I could see it from my house. It was scary. Almost 65 acres, no livestock harmed, no structures harmed. They did an amazing job. We should be extremely proud of our fire services within our community here. They do an incredible job for us, and that's just proof of the quality that we have out here. I was out probably about three miles away from it when it first went up, and within four minutes, there was at least eight or nine trucks there. They did an incredible job. Brian was, I was on the phone with Brian on that one to make sure if we needed any kind of support. He did an amazing job making sure that we were coordinating properly, and just want to give everybody a big shout-out and, and thank you. So it was right on our doorsteps of Willow Park, but the community pulled together, and we did a great job.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?[1788.38]